You're watching Cable 2.
Evening and welcome to the Winston-Salem Forsyth County Board of Education Special Call Board Meeting, March 25th, 2021. I'm Shay Woodbury, Chair of the Board. I'm going to officially call our meeting to order. We're going to establish a quorum. I think we have Board Member Bo Hannan, Board Member Bremer, Board Member Calvert-Hayes, Board Member Crowley, Board Member Jones, Board Member Kaplan, Board Member Parker, and myself. So, we do have a quorum to continue. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Review. Is there a motion to approve the agenda? I think Mr. Bo Hannan made the motion first and then Board Member Calvert-Hayes second. The motion, all in favor? The next item on the agenda is our public comment on agenda items for tonight. I will remind everyone that this time is for you to make comments on the agenda item for tonight. I will say that please know that we cannot talk about personnel or student personal issues. We ask such that you are considerate and kind in your comments. You will have three minutes to make your comments. You will make those comments to the Chair, myself. And if you have any questions, although we will not respond as Board Members, someone on staff may be able to assist you. The first person we have tonight is Keisha Payne-Williams.
Good evening, Chairwoman Woodbury.
Good evening.
Superintendent McManus, School Board Members. I come to you this evening not to try to convince you of what is quite evident of a decision that is already seemingly solid. Instead, I come to speak about the concept of trickle-down decision-making and what happens in many organizations when those at the top fail to understand the challenges of the bottom. In this process, there are enforcers who organize the plans for implementation of made decisions and those who carry out those plans. Simple process, except when the top decision-makers rarely get input from the enforcers and completely overlook the thoughts of the implementers, but demand adherence to the decision, discord, mistrust, and low morale formulate cracking the foundation of the organizational structure. This has become the behavior of this district throughout the pandemic. Our administrators are constantly or continuously having to create almost impossible plans of action while teachers are forever having to implement decisions we are rarely involved in making. As a result, it is us, the implementers, who are constantly told to suck it up regardless of our opinions or more importantly, our mental and/or physical health. I confidently say it is the teachers and the educational support personnel's unwavering dedication to do their jobs that makes everyone else shine even though we feel at times this board has no clue the predicaments they put us in or challenges we face when you all vote on matters that sometimes appear to be privately motivated and externally driven. As you stand on your decisions tonight, I ask you to really think about how this will translate to the work administrators, teachers, and ESPs will need to do to make it all happen. Think about the added emotional burden you are placing on the shoulders of the already overburdened and remember this decision when we are together again trying to figure out how to effectively serve our students, the clients in this business of education with yet again another significant teacher shortage. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Frankie Petrie.
Good evening. I'm just going to make some comments and I'm hoping that maybe somewhere along the line you guys have discussed them at some point. With all the flex days that have been in, I'm hopeful that our students will get all of the educational days that they're supposed to have by the state. Also, I'm wondering with the CRT students, they need to get back in the classroom because they've got to get these hours in order to finish their courses. If they're not in that classroom or setting, they're not going to get the hours in order to finish that course. Then, we go down to the ECs and the 501s. It is a state mandate that those kids are in class five days a week. If they're there five days a week, we need all kids there. I understand we probably will not go with that, but somehow we've got to go with a state mandate for the EC kids as well. Then, maybe if they're talking about the six feet in the classroom being at eating time, at lunch, as opposed to three feet when they can be in the classroom, especially for elementary. And there's a problem in, and I hear comments that there's a problem that they'll have their mask off so they can't talk. Well, if they've got the mask off to eat, for goodness sakes, they're breathing, then they should be able to talk at that same time. That's an important part of life, to be able to talk to your friends. They need that. We need it. And then Governor Cooper, of course, said all kids should be back in the classroom. But today, something I heard on the news, it was when President Biden was giving his first speech, and he said point-blank on the infrastructure that every, let's see, how did he word it? All kids in school should be able to drink from the water fountains in their schools. Not in Forsyth County schools, they don't get to. Why not? That would be my question. Those kids need to do that. We've got kids that are depressed, a lot of them. Not, virtual's not for everybody, remote's not, but it works for some. And you know, give the choice. Let them, those that it works for, have it. But those that it's not, let's get them in class. Let's get them going so that we don't have a generation of dropouts. That's not what we need in our community or in our country. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have Tony Wright.
Good evening, boy.
Good evening.
I come today for my son. My son goes to East Forsyth Middle School and his home school is Western Prep. That doesn't have AG classes, doesn't offer it. Don't know why. Right in the middle of an urban neighborhood that we should have. My son cannot be bused from the neighborhood to east due to the pandemic. I understand we have that. I'm glad we're going back to school, but he has to have those classes. That's a solution that they had, that he has to go back to prep. Well, if he go back to prep, he's not going to be in his class and he's going to not have the challenging classes. That'd be a little bit above the kids that's in there. Not against those kids. We love them all. But we got to have some other solutions to get these kids to school. We just can't sell them, say every time I pick up the phone, "I'm sorry, Mr. Wright." No. I brought my son here tonight just to make prove to him, you're not going to sell them. We're going to fight. We want solutions. It's easy for us to shoot out excuses why we can't do it. Let's have the solutions to why we can. Get that boy back to school. Give him some transportation help. I'm a single parent. I'm a single parent right now. Shout-outs to all of us. If I had to quit my job, my son's going to school and he's going to get the proper education that he deserves, that he's entitled to. I'm not good on speeches, but when it comes to mine, I have to stand firm. And I speak of my whole community. I stand in the middle of an urban community. I work for the city of Winston-Salem. I'm a code enforcement officer. I work with the youth every day. I see these kids out here that's not going to school and we're trying to push them back in there that don't have the support like me. It's not going to say, "Come on, son, you're going with me and we're going to speak." Somebody's going to hear me on this board. Somebody's got to make a decision. Or call me somewhere else. Do I need to go to Riley? It don't make no difference. But I'm quite sure we can do it here as a group to get this kid or all the kids to the proper education that they're entitled to. Lauren, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next, we have Danielle, I think it's Sally or Salee.
It's Sally.
Sally, thank you.
So, hello. My name is Danielle Salee and I live in Louisville. I have four children, ages 15 to 7. We moved here from Greensboro over the summer and one of the biggest reasons we chose to move to Forsyth County in Louisville is because the schools there were reported to be excellent. And you know, like many of the decisions we make in our lives, my husband and I, we put our kids first. So, this year's been really very disappointing to me in regards that, for the most part, school's been virtual. Even when the kids have been able to go back to school, all they're doing is they're following the virtual class on a computer in front of them. They're not engaging the teacher in front of the class because she's teaching, you know, from the class on the computers. My oldest went to West Forsyth. She did two days of virtual. She was the only student in her classroom for three of her classes, one of which, the one day, the substitute teacher never showed up because she didn't think anybody was going to be in there. And her other classes, there were, she was, there were two or three other students. She was dying to go back to school. She has asthma. I said, "You should stay home. You don't want to wear the mask all day." She says, "No, Mom, I want to go. I want to meet people." It was so depressing to her that she came in and said, "Mom, I would rather sit in my room than do two days a week, every other week," and being so separated and having no other students there. So, this has affected my family. It's affected other people like this gentleman who just spoke. You know, I feel the kids need to be in school. That education is essential to the populace of society. Teachers are essential workers. Our kids are not, some kids are doing fine, but kids are not, the majority of them are not getting an adequate education with the way things are set up right now. Kids are getting hurt from all spectrums of the society, okay? There's depression. We've heard stories of kids committing suicide. My daughter certainly is depressed. My straight A student practically failed the last grading period. You know, kids are doing poorly. They're falling behind and we are unnecessarily hurting our children by not fully opening the schools, okay? Another thing that I've heard is that one of the reasons we're not opening the schools is the teachers' union is saying that students need to be vaccinated. I think that vaccination should be a personal choice. It is experimental. The trials are not going to be over until 2023rd. I don't think it's an option. We just need to get these kids back in the classroom because the kids are suffering. And I hope that you choose to do that, to fully open our schools because I think there's going to be some really terrible consequences if we don't get the kids back in the classrooms. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Marsha Maxey.
I'm here to support the folks, the parents, who want their children to be back in school. I'm a grandparent. I'm a citizen. I see the harm that comes from not having children in school. Virtual school is fine, but it doesn't solve the problem. They need to be in school with the wonderful teachers that they have. I would just like to encourage you all to vote to have five days a week back in the classroom, no restrictions about vaccination, certainly no restrictions about parents being vaccinated. I've heard that that's a requirement as well. Children may get COVID, but they don't get severe cases. They are less likely to pass it on. It's not a huge issue with children. Bigger issue is the emotional, emotional life. So, please, get the children back in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Amanda Yocely.
The past year has been hard on everyone, but no one has felt it more than our kids. From the day they learned to talk, the importance of having an education has been drilled into them. They have been told that in order to be successful in life, they had to stay in school and make good grades. Parents and educators have spent decades convincing our children that this was true. This year, however, politics, board members, and unions made us into liars. In the last four weeks, our county has lost three children to suicide. Those children will never get to experience graduation, college, or having a family of their own. They were the victims of a society that let them down. Among the casualties this year were disadvantaged children. These children already struggled to succeed and ironically, those union members who have advocated for them prior to COVID drove a nail in the coffin of their educational prospects. This year, I've seen the worst in people, but I've also seen incredible acts of selflessness from our willing educators. I see them smiling through tears and putting everything they have into pulling these children from the flames. They say it takes a village and this year has only proved that. Parents don't want babysitters. We need our teammates back and so many are waiting for their chance to get in the game. The reason you are seeing parents now that you didn't see before COVID is because we trusted you. Help us trust you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ashley Justice.
Good evening, members of the board.
Good evening.
I thank you for having this meeting tonight. The other night, a board member said, "How will one month of in-person learning change all the other months of virtual learning?" First of all, let me say, a month can change a lot. When my son was able to start going four days in person, what he learned in just two weeks was astounding, not to mention how much his mental health improved. Also, we have been hearing, "What's one more month?" For 12 months now. Every time we meet our goals, people want to move the goalposts. What's the excuse going to be in August? And yes, at this point, I feel there'll be another excuse in August. Another board member said, "Why disrupt their schedules now?" This is the same board member who wanted to pull all of our elementary students out just a few months ago. I read through the duties and responsibility for a BOE member in Forsyth County and once said, "To have the educational welfare of students attending public schools in Forsyth County as their first and greatest concern. So, let's start doing that tonight. Plan A all the way for fourth quarter. Give these kids at least that. Thank you."
Thank you. Next, we have Steve Bock.
Good evening, board members.
Good evening.
We're going to have a common theme tonight. I think a lot of us are here to talk about the mental health of the kids. I just wanted to review a few data points with you. I feel the greatest risk to the safety of the kids is their mental health and not COVID. The crude fatality rate for children under 17 is .000437. So, I had to put my glasses on because there's so many zeros in there. It's .04%. 226 children died from COVID. Surely that's too many, but 188 died from the flu the year before and we didn't close school then. Kids 5 to 17 years old have a suicide rate, three times that number. That's pre-COVID. Now that COVID has been impacting us for over a year, that is spiking even higher. The CDC has found that children's mental health has caused emergency room visits to increase 25%. In New York City, three public school students died in three weeks. You've heard some other examples of local children as well. A study published by UNC earlier this month found that moderate to severe anxiety in first-year college students increased 48%. Black students were most impacted by depression. Incidents in that group of students grew by 89%. That could be offset if we get those kids into school again for the last month. I think the mental health has made such an impact, 16-year-old girl in Texas wrote a Google form, sent it out to over 500 students. 12% of the responses said they very often think of suicide. 6% of them said they always think about suicide or self-arm. You need to really listen to these. This is the voice of the kids out there. Schools around the world have been fully open since August. There's not a single piece of data that exists that indicates any increase in risk at all to our children. In Wisconsin, seven out of 5,000 students got COVID. Zero of 650 staff members were tested positive during that in session school. No example of any spread to or from staff occurred despite high community spread in that area. Three other school studies, Massachusetts, Salt Lake, and Florida showed the same results. And the same quote from Board Member Bremer, "Why are we doing something that will only be effective for a month?" Because there's minimal risk to the kids. The vaccine is 100% efficacy versus death. Mental health needs of our kids must be addressed. It's not about a month. It's about fixing things before they are no longer fixable. Our choice to not prioritize the well-being of our children, especially the most disadvantaged, will be felt for decades. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bock. Kiara Bock.
I've been begging to go to school since the day that I heard that we would be in remote learning and was not happy to have to learn from a computer and not go to face-to-face learning with my teachers. But as the first quarter went by, my mom noticed my grades were not as good as when I was taking lessons in real school. I'm typically an AB student, but during this year, I'm not doing so well. Online learning is not for me. Other students may think differently, but that is just my opinion. I find myself easily distracted. Technology only adds to my frustrations. A good example is how Canvas crashed for an hour today, not allowing me to go to my second period. I go to Meadowbrook Middle School. I only, I went to school two days every two weeks and the past two times I went, I was the only person in two of my classes. When I go on my Zoom call sometimes, my teacher's not in a mask because no one went to her live class. And I don't understand why we can't combine cohorts when it's only me or zero people. Last year in sixth grade, I tried out for some school teams. I really enjoyed getting to do some, but during the first two weeks when we were in online learning, I was told that all sports from my school had been canceled, even though that is what I really enjoy doing when I'm there. On my soccer team, a lot of kids, more than half, are going to school and have been for quite some time. No one is in full cohorts. They all have sports in their school and yet there have been no giant outbreaks. My question is, why is it that I'm being punished for having a good school that has a lot of people who want to go to it due to the fact that our waiting list is so long? I don't understand why we can't join cohorts when most of my classes, the max people we have in the class is four. Thank you.
Thank you, Kiara. And on behalf of our board, we want to thank you for having the courage to come as a student to talk to us. Abigail Bock.
Hello, members of the board. I'm a sophomore at Reagan High School and I'm here to try and represent the teenagers that online learning is not working for. When you think about your bedroom, you think about, do you think about school or work? No, you think about a safe place, away from all the troubles of the world. Most kids do their schoolwork in their bedrooms and they get distracted. When you're in a safe place, you don't want to do school. So, kids don't do their work and they don't turn assignments. Even for the kids that are still getting good grades, none of them actually learn anything. You don't retain any of the knowledge you learn in online classes. The worst part about online learning is the loss of social interaction. As adults, you still have places to go and people to talk to. As teenagers, we don't all have cars and ways to see our friends. Texting isn't the same as a conversation. I have friends that I haven't talked to in a year because I don't have their number and we don't see each other every day. You need to talk to people and we no longer have that option. You're not allowed to chat in an online classroom and even if you are in an in-person class, you don't get to actually talk to anyone. It hurts us. We feel isolated and alone. You talk about the reasons we can't go to school. On Tuesday, you said we weren't sure how we would do lunch. We aren't the first school to go back, look around you, talk to other schools. If you haven't had a plan, then what have you been doing? With less strict guidelines, this is an even easier problem to solve now. You talk about doing the best for children, but you haven't done so so far. We need school. We're willing to do whatever is necessary as long as we get the education we deserve and go back to a semi-normal. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Abigail. I want to recognize Abigail, Kiara, and I think Mr. Wright's son that came tonight as students to let us know as board members, your perspective of your experiences right now in our schools. That's a very bold and courageous statement to come before the board and again, this is why we all are here. So, your presence definitely makes a difference. So, thank you so much to the parents for bringing them here too. Next, we have Alan Daniel.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board, Ms. McManus. As you enter into debate regarding returning more middles and high schoolers to in-person learning, I encourage you to review the current list of clusters in the state of North Carolina. I gave you that list in an email. The list includes neighboring districts that have been touted to have been successful implementing Plan A. The list also includes our own Walbertown High School. This past Friday night, three schools, West, North, and Walbertown, had to cancel football games. West and Walbertown, their second game in a row due to COVID-positive cases within the program and North due to exposure during their game against Walbertown the prior week. What this shows is that we cannot safely return 75 student athletes to the in-person. How are we going to do 2,400? One high school shut down every single athletic program during the winter at one point or another due to COVID. There is no way to safely implement Plan A in high school and middle school with students changing classes. What we call cohorts is not what CDC calls cohorts. The presence of more students in the school and less social distancing will inevitably lead to more cases, throwing a huge monkey wrench into exams which begin five weeks after the scheduled or discussed return. Currently, this week, we have had 14 new cases among students. We have 130 new cases among students and 37 among staff in the last month. The place that I have heard absolutely no discussion is transportation, as was mentioned earlier. Many students who are in magnet programs or choice schools have chosen to remain remote because there is no transportation for them. Does the return of all students mean that those students will have transportation provided? If not, there is no equity. They have no real choice. As the gentleman said, they either remain remote or they have to go fourth quarter to a brand-new school with brand-new teachers and brand-new classmates because there's no transportation to the school they've been attending online. Will there be monitors on the buses to enforce masks or worn properly? Will students be packed on buses or will students be arriving late to school because they have to make multiple trips? The other demographic, I will...
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Next, we have Rihanna Garrison.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
On Tuesday, we heard about changes from a teacher's perspective. I want to tell you about changes from my students' perspective. I have a third grader and a first grader. The third grader does not handle change well. She never has, not even as a baby. We have to process things through her, talk to her over and over. Last year, school was ripped away from her. She had no choice in that. There really was a discussion beforehand, but we said, "It's okay. It will get better because summer is coming and then you get to go back to school." But you didn't. She didn't get to go back to school. So, she had to stay remote learning. I work in healthcare. I had to put in extra hours. I was more than happy to serve our community because that's my job and that's my job. and that's my duty as a P A of this community, is to be there for our community. That meant extra time away from my family. My husband, he works full time. So what happened to my daughter? She had to go to daycare. What happens in daycare? You have students from 10, 20 other schools there, all trying to do Zoom. And you know what happens? Oh, squirrel! Oh, what are you doing? Oh! But daycare was fantastic. They did the best they could, but it wasn't working for them. It wasn't working for my kids. So I had to pull her, get a private tutor. We are blessed enough to be able to afford that. All while students in our classroom in third grade are home by themselves because their parents can't afford the blessings that we have. So then, her sister gets to go back to school. Great, another change for her because now our tutor's on. So she has to change life again and again. And now she's back four days a week. And you know what? She's still crying and begging to go back five days a week. Because that change and the disruption in the middle of her week is horrible. They're not with their friends. They're not doing classwork. She's on a computer doing iReady. And I don't know if you've read iReady, but it, well, that's a topic for another day. But she is in third grade, which is a big change anyways. And on top of that, she's an A G student, so their expectations are even higher and higher and higher. On top of that, she's had multiple teachers this year, multiple people in and out of her classroom for multiple reasons. They've had to rise to new expectations and new changes every day. Our kids have adapted to this, and they're begging for more. They're begging for more, they're begging for more and more time in the classroom because that is what's working for them. It doesn't work for all students, and for those students, we have remote, and we have catered to those remote students. Now it is time to get our kids back in school. No more Wednesday, no more work from home, and that's not even related to what they're doing in class. And lastly, I'll leave you with this. According to the American Psychiatric Association, post-magical stress disorder is a psychiatric disorder that may occur in people who have experienced or witnessed a traumatic event such as a natural disaster, a serious accident, a terrorist act, war combat, or rape, who've been threatened with death, sexual violence, or serious injuries. If our teachers are experiencing PTSD, they need serious psychiatric help. It is not something to be joked around about. And if you are joking about it, that is sad.
Thank you. Next, we have Katie Sonnenlee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's really good to be back with you all after a year away. Not to have, not being here every Tuesday night has been really strange. I want to say welcome to Mr. Bohannon and congratulations. I haven't seen you in person since you got on the boards. Congratulations. I know there's a lot of emotions around this decision you all are making tonight. As a parent and as a community advocate and volunteer, I feel all those emotions. But there are, there are some things that we can't change about the pandemic right now, but there's some things that we can look at and that we can change. We have a miraculous thing that has happened in our country and in our state. We have vaccines now. A year ago, I told my kids that they could do whatever they wanted once we got vaccines. They said they wanted to get Coke and chips and pour it on themselves outside in the driveway. That was their thing. I said, okay, I'll buy you each a two liter. That's what I did last weekend because now both of me and my husband have gotten it. And so my kindergartner in third grade are very excited. But we have vaccines. And I know there's concern over, especially high school students and their ability to transmit the virus, both to staff and amongst each others. But we have a vaccine that can go up to 16 and up at this point. And we have buildings in every community in this county as a school district. You have high schools. We could have vaccine clinics at high schools, turning high schools into clinics on Wednesdays or on the weekends. I volunteered at Morning Star Baptist last weekend, two weekends ago, at a pop-up clinic that the Forsyth County Health Department had put there. It was super well organized, very efficient. People were so happy to have it in their communities. It's over near Bowman Gray Stadium, kind of near W S S U. It was extremely impressive, the way that the county health department has figured out how to do these pop-up clinics. It was in and out. People were there for less than 30 minutes. Particularly in vulnerable communities and communities that maybe don't have as much access to healthcare or to transportation, to get them where they want to be to get vaccines, I really would like to encourage the district to look at turning the buildings you already have, opening those up to the community on the weekends as a vaccine site. I know you worked at the health department to figure out how to get teachers and staff and educators vaccinated, and I encourage you to do the same for both our students and their families and community members that are in those communities. It's a lot easier for folks to walk to the school in their neighborhood than it is to get all the way over to the fairgrounds or to Haynes Mall or wherever else. We also have great health programs like at North Forsyth. Maybe there's a way to encourage students to volunteer, to help with traffic flow, to give some of those students some real hands-on experience of what it would look like when they're out in the workforce. We can get a lot of folks vaccinated with their first dose, especially a Pfizer that's available for 16 and up, before we even look at the return dates in mid-April. So I really encourage you to use the, use the resources the school district has and work with the county to figure that out.
Thank you. Last, we have Jennifer Pike.
Okay, so I have a freshman at East Forsyth and I have a senior at East Forsyth. So I'm speaking from the perspective of a parent of a high schooler who has been out of school since last March. Yesterday, I learned from one of my son's A P teachers that she has lost 5,000 minutes of instruction as of yesterday for her high school students. 5,000 minutes. That's with flex day and everything else. Think about that. That's 83 hours, basically, of lost instruction for a high school student. Now think about the students who are failing right now, and would those minutes have made a difference in learning, in retention? And we'll never know because those minutes are gone. And they're lost, and they're lost like a bunch of our high school students are right now. Think about the students in the A P courses, and those are the ones who chose to take the most demanding and rigorous classes, thinking and hoping that they would return to the classroom at some point this year. They have A P exams coming up, and they must score well in those exams to earn college credit. And let's face it, that's why they're taking the A P classes, is for the college credit. Would those 5,000 minutes make a difference in effect their exam outcome? If you ask an A P teacher and a student, most will tell you, yes, it will. And they'll also tell you that they're worried right now. They're looking at the very real possibility of a year's worth of hard work being flushed down the toilet. Okay? I have a senior who wanted to speak tonight. He's at home with a pile of homework because he was too anxious to leave it. On Tuesday, a comment was made that one more month of remote learning won't matter, but I strongly disagree. A P exams are just around the corner, and I'm willing to bet that there are students that will jump at the chance to return to campus to prepare for those exams. The time, that time in the classroom matters to a bunch of students, and the data shows, we've seen it, that face-to-face learning is the best. I heard a comment that high school students are returning to the classroom because they're afraid. And I'm sure that some are, and some have very valid reasons for not wanting to come to school. I work in healthcare. I also teach, and I've been face-to-face since last year. I was scared. I've had students that were scared, all right? But that's a blanket statement, and it's not true for everybody. They aren't coming to school because with four cohorts, they're often the only student in class, and who wants to sit in class alone? My freshman doesn't go. She signed up for face-to-face. She went twice. She was like, I'm not doing this. We have 25% of the school year left to finish. 25%. That's a huge amount of time, and it does matter. It matters to our students. It matters to those high school students who have felt as if they haven't been wanted in the schools and that their needs have been ignored this year. It matters to the seniors who are preparing for life after graduation, no matter what that is. Give them more time in schools. They've given the Woodson Forsyth County School System 13 years, so don't forget about them.
Thank you. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a discussion item, the return to school recommendation by our superintendent, Tricia McManus.
Okay, so good evening, members of the board, and thank you to all of the folks who came out to provide your perspective on our students returning to in-person learning. I will tell you that we, the slides I put together tonight are just based on a series of questions that different board members had. And so it's just to give some information that will share why we are, I am going to make the recommendation I'm going to make tonight. I will tell you, it's interesting that all year we have been kind of methodical and, and very intentional about this rollout. And as I actually, as I looked at our timeline, I too thought, wow. It was really only a month ago that 10, 10th through 12th graders came into our buildings. And that, that was a very long time for kids to be away from in-person instruction. I'm going to agree with the comments tonight related to the fact that schools are critical to this community as a whole. Schools are critical to our students' development, both academic, social, emotional, physical. I mean, we are, we are critical. And when I look at the entire year, I want to thank remote learning centers and folks like that that allowed students to come back in person for us. Thank you. It is our responsibility to provide the education for our students. And I will tell you, the, the most important thing about all of these decisions and the fact that I come here tonight on March 24th, I believe, and that we're still having a debate. It's, it's, it's interesting that we find ourselves in this spot yet again. But I will tell you, my very first board meeting, I said I understood the valid concerns from both sides. But I will tell you, there is, people have had choices this year. The only group that has not really had a choice, if you really think about it, are the students in six through 12 that have not had the choice for in-person learning. They're the only group that has not had a choice. The students that want to be remote have had a choice. The parents that wanted their kids to be remote have had a choice. You know, we work very hard to get our adults that wanted to be vaccinated, vaccinated. And yes, we can continue to work. I love the ideas about working to get our students vaccinated, opening up clinics. I am, we are all in for that, and we will be on that right away. So I want to preface my statements to say, you know, our goal the entire time has been, this school year, to get all of our students back that choose to be in person, in person. That has been our goal the entire year. But I will tell you, if this doesn't show that we listened to data, we listened to facts, we listened to the expert advice of Dr. Ol, of Duke Collaborative, who I just spoke with again today. So all of this timeline was extremely methodical, strategic, and I'll go to the next one. It was not like we sent everyone back at one time. So, so I do want to say that we have listened this entire time to our, to our educators, to our parents, to the scientists in this community, to community members on both sides of this argument. And I think this timeline shows that. It is not an aggressive timeline. I mean, let me show you again. It is not an aggressive timeline this year. It is actually a very drawn-out timeline to make sure that we listened. We listened when people said, wait, the holidays are going to be a major spread. Hold off. It were, oh, we're so close to vaccinations. Hold off. We, every time, we, we listened. And I just want to point that out, and when I looked at this today, I was like, oh, my gosh. We're finally at this last group of students. And I will tell you, there are students that don't want to return, and they don't have to. They don't. They stay home and do remote learning. There are students that want to. We heard some today that really want to and really need to. And I cannot stand up here as a public educator and as a leader of this system and ignore the voices of students that say, I just want to be back four days a week. And I will tell you, I have been in elementary schools, probably three or four in the last two weeks. I was at Hall Woodward today, and their, their costumes are packed. I mean, there's kids everywhere. There's teachers teaching. The, the screen, the kids that are on the remote screen were less, were way less. It was maybe one in every class or two. The kids were present and were so excited. I mean, honestly, I, to see the faces, and I understand high school is a different beast than middle school. And so tonight's presentation is really going to be addressed six through 12. All right? But I just, I wanted to frame this by, these, these decisions have not been made lightly, and I said that from day one. They have not been. If they were made lightly, we could go back here and on, actually on August, the first day of school, we would have gone to Plan A. That would have been a light decision. The other thing is, these decisions have also been based on what was happening in our community. What was the governor and the state allowing to happen? Literally, it was just, if you look at this timeline here, when kindergarten and first went back, let's see, to four days. Oh, March 8th and March 15th. That was when we were able to relax social distancing guidance in elementary. Our state had a requirement that you had to have students six feet apart at that time. As soon as they relaxed it, we came back and we had all kids in, in those grades come back to the, to the four days a week if they chose to. So now, two weeks ago, the governor came back, and he is encouraging, and so is the toolkit, encouraging school districts to bring back K-12 as many days as possible, four, four, four days a week. And I know there's, there's concern about the four days a week, and I understand that. And I've talked a little bit, and I will in a few slides, about why that middle, that flex Wednesday was in our schedule and why it continues to be in our schedule to this day. But I say that again to say, a lot of this was dictated also by what we were allowed to do based on the governor's orders. I will tell you too, before I go to the next slide, the studies that one of our parents shared tonight, those studies have also been part of the sharing at Duke Collaborative. And the Massachusetts study, the Florida study, I will tell you, it is accurate. Community spread in Florida, I mean, if you, I'm from there, I know, people are, they're pretty much not masked out in public, but I tell you, this, it has not been spread in schools. And their high schoolers have been back since day one of this school year with minimal social distancing. And then in Massachusetts, there, there are studies right now that show three feet, compared to six feet, does not make a difference. And the data is, is the same, is similar, that you can be three feet in a classroom. Now, our guidance and our toolkit says everywhere else in the school, we can't have congregating. We need to keep our social distancing in the hallways, how we do, everything else, and we're going to get to that now. So here we go. One of the things I told you I would bring back is the numbers that were predicted. These are our, our principals predicted these numbers of kids that would be coming back. I think these are pretty high predictions because this is not what we have seen so far. I will tell you that. But if you look at the cohort, the students, the first column is how many would be in one cohort, how many would be in the other. And then it shows, we asked principals to estimate knowing their families, and they've been kind of surveying all along. It may not have been formal. But then we asked them to estimate how many kids would probably come back if we were able to come back four days a week. Because some students that are like, I don't want to go back two days, they might come back four days with that option. So that's what these numbers are here on this chart. It's a prediction. It is definitely not, you know, a science to these numbers as far as complete accuracy. It is a prediction. Here is high school. High school, the numbers remain lower. The, the number of students that are predicted to return, there are a couple that are higher, but they remain, if you look, the average at about 50%. And so I'm painting this picture so that you have an idea about what it would look like on a campus. You know, on a campus that is used to 1,146 students, they're, they would be expecting about 540. On a campus, you know, Carver is a smaller campus. They have like 582. They would be expecting 400. So you can see all the way down what would be the expectation. Again, students that want to stay remote will have that option the remainder of this school year. And next school year, if they want to stay remote, they will be able to apply or sign up, register for the virtual academy. Here's a few of our other schools. The schools that have grade out, that are grade out, basically are, already have their kids back four days a week, just so you know. That's why the numbers, so Carter, Yay, they've been doing this for a long time. And they have shown great success with our, our students and with the staff. It's amazing. We have early college, low rants, and middle college. They, they've been back four days, which is why their numbers are really not included in those two columns. So this just shows you where we think our schools would be if we went to four days per week. All right, here is our data right now. We are at 3.1% community spread. And so again, I mean, that is tremendous, and thank you to our community for working at this and, and to our health department and everybody else for working so hard at this. Here are our confirmed cases. This is two weeks of confirmed cases. These numbers, I just got. These numbers I just got this morning from Jennifer Corso, who manages all of our contact tracing, all of our data. So if there are any specific questions later, I'll call on her. And thank you for letting me kind of get through all of it and then ask questions because it'll, I might answer some of your questions. Staff, five, and students, 28. That has been for the last two weeks, and that is confirmed cases. Close contacts is higher. And yes, we do have one of our high schools that was a cluster, and it was not because of kids in classrooms. It was literally, and it wasn't because of on the football field either. It was literally, I'm not going to go into the detail, but we, we can, some of these things can be avoided if we stay very strict on our protocols. But most of those numbers came from two incidences, just so you know. And those were the close contacts. Now, that didn't lead to positive cases, it just were, they were close contacts. So I will tell you, one of the things I wanted to tell you as well, for any district in this state that has chosen to go to in-person instruction for the full week or for four days, because it is, for, a lot of the districts have chosen to keep that day that they've had in their calendar, whether it be a Wednesday or a Friday, they have to work with the Duke Collaborative. We've already been working with the Duke Collaborative. Duke Collaborative gets your data, oops, sorry, gets your data, I talk with my hands a lot, gets your data and they analyze it. So they, they have our contact tracing data, they're looking at it every day, and they're working with us. Well, every district that is moving lately to Plan A for secondary has to work with Duke Collaborative. And we've been working with them on our data. So let's see, so the toolkit now. So let's look at what the toolkit is saying. It was again changed today, so it's changed in the last two days. This is, you can see what one of the quotes is from the toolkit. And then you can see some of the other requirements or recommendations in the toolkit. Here are the requirements. The requirement still make sure that schools and districts are providing that physical distancing in areas where students may congregate. So hallways, lunchrooms, bathrooms, all those places that are not inside the classroom. Limit, still continue to limit your nonessential visitors. Monitor arrival dismissal again. So all of these things on here are still requirements in the toolkit. Here are other requirements in the toolkit. There are no minimum physical distancing requirements under Plan A, and cohorting students is not required for six through 12 under Plan A. I will tell you why there's some confusion about that in just a second with the CDC language. So here are other recommendations about physical distancing and minimizing exposure. So basically, maintain at least three feet of distance between students in the classrooms to the greatest extent possible. Some of the other districts I've talked to to ask about how they've done this and even with the three feet, some of them, they haven't even said three feet. It's minimal social distancing. As much as possible in our classrooms, I want us, we will look to the three feet. Maintain at least six feet distancing between the adult and the students as much as possible. And then you can see when masks cannot be worn, and this goes to the eating. When masks are taken off, we need to maintain six feet of social distance. Okay? So these are, again, even though it says recommend, it doesn't say requirements, but we have been, we want to follow the recommendations. And so these are recommendations, not requirements. Monitoring for systems requirements. A lot of our, a lot of our folks are asking, do we have to keep screening everybody and all of that? And I would tell you, the requirement is still the same for monitoring symptoms. If someone's having symptoms, they need to go home. I mean, that's, that's, they need to not come to school or they need to go home. But I will tell you, as far as recommendations, it, you don't, it's not a requirement anymore that you have to screen. But I am going to tell you, and I know some of our, a lot of our educators want us to take that out, and I, we can, but let's do one thing at a time. So let's, let's get kids back, let's screen initially, and we can start to have conversations about what that could look like differently, maybe without a station forms or other things. We can, we, that, we have time to figure out. Oops. I don't see my next slide. Did I do something wrong? Nope. I did something wrong. I'm sorry. I just jumped a bunch of slides. Okay. Here we go to CDC, to CDC guidance, very quickly. So this is where, so if there is high community spread, if you look at the last bullet, where there is high community transmission, that is where your secondary schools or students should be six feet apart in their classroom if they're not co-horted. Well, we all know high school kids are not co-horted. They're changing classes. And so basically, that's what this means. If you have high community transmission, like when we were at 18%, you know, 90, all of that, seven, eight, nine, 10, that, this was a recommendation, that is where you have, you're supposed to. It is a recommendation from the CDC. So I wanted to make sure that was clear. Here is some of our grades. You've seen this. This is not new data, but I will, but somebody asked, asked about our, this information. And again, if you look, this was already shared by Mr. Kraft at one of our meetings. But if you look, there is obviously, there's an increase in students with DNF, and there are decreases with students making As and Bs. And the hardest hit group are our kids on standard, in standard coursework. Here was our proficiency data on the fall EOCs. You can see that again, this is not new data, we've shared it. Here are students, a little bit of data around credit recovery and also referrals to CARES. And you can just see all of this data. So basically, 1,300 of our high schoolers are enrolled in credit recovery because of not doing well in a class. 422 seniors are enrolled in credit recovery. We've got, if you look at the CARES, we've had 240 referrals to Main Street. Main Street is for those students, it's like a remote learning center. If students were not able to get on during their class time, the CARES team at the school could refer them to Main Street. And so about 111 attended Main Street so that they could get support they needed in the evening as well for many of them because they were working during the day. And then you can see our kids, about 1,142 high school students have been referred to the school-based or even the district-based CARES team. Those reasons initially were about connectivity and access, but over time, they've become more about lack of engagement, not logging in, not being in class, low attendance, and also students that may be showing signs of, of needing additional social, emotional support. CTE and remote instruction. This is just to say that, you know, at one of our board meetings, we did approve some of the CTE students to come back more often. They have to have their online learning, I mean, I'm sorry, their hands-on learning to be able to get their, what they need to get their certifications for their future. And so, I mean, same in our science classes. I was in a high school class a few weeks ago, and they were dissecting, and I was like, it's awesome. I don't know how you would do that if your kids were on a computer, because the kids were completely in the middle of dissecting. I can't remember what it was, but it brought back some bad high school memories in my opinion. I could smell that smell, you know? Anyway, so then we go to SEL and mental health supports. So some, one of our board members asked about, what are we going to give students when they return? So these are the supports we have. We don't have one-step program that everybody does around this. We've got individualized supports with our counselors, psychologists, social workers, our CARES team, mental health providers. We have school health alliance. We have, kids can get free mental health support in many ways in our district. We've got the insight services, our therapeutic day treatments, counseling, and we are prepared as students come back, or even those that stay remote, where we see signs that they need support. We've got the resources to provide it. And here as well, our counselors, our social workers are amazing, our psychologists, they can provide the support. We need our students. We need to be able to connect with all of our students. Anyway, so here's more things, individual check-ins, these are things schools are doing. SEL lessons that are actually integrated into the core curriculum. Mindfulness activities. I know we've seen some amazing mindfulness. There's a website that has been touted this year. I can't remember the school, where the counselor or whoever came from that put it together, but it's an amazing site for mindfulness. But programs and resources. So these are just some, some things. And I will tell you, the folks that have talked about mental health, they're, they're right. They're, they're right. I mean, if you look at the articles and the research out there around what has happened to the mental health of our students, and I will tell you, we are going to feel it for a while. We are. And again, I think that we, we need to intervene as quickly as possible so we don't lose anybody else. Classrooms. So the bipolar ionization, and that was our strategy for working on air circulation to make sure that our classrooms would be safe. We also honestly, and I know that maybe at some time you could not open windows and all of that, you can, you can open doors, we can open windows, get fresh air in, but we also have these bipolar ionizations. 63 schools are completed, 12 remain, and all will be completed, I'm hoping by April 12th. Daryl's saying, yep, as soon as we get all the equipment, they'll be done, but no later than April 16th. Every school will have had, been completed. PPE, this came up in a few, a few times today, and I want to know that, I want everyone to know, we have so much PPE, and it is no cost to schools. We bought it all with CARES dollars. It's sitting in warehouses so that our schools need whatever they need, whether it be sanitizer, whether it be disinfectant wipes, all of that, we have. And we just need to make sure that people have it in their hands. And if they don't, we can get it to them. So we need our teachers to make sure that our folks know they have whatever they need, we have available. School logistics in six, 12, so meal times, back to meal times. Here is the expectation, students will be six feet apart with their masks off. So schools are going to be addressing this in different ways. If, depending on what happens this evening, they will be addressing it different ways. Some will be splitting up classes, where some students will be in the cafeteria, some will be in their classroom. Some will be eating in outside areas that they have, that we have in many of our schools, and some will be in their classrooms. Some may split the block to where half the class is eating, while half the class could be reading, and then skip, you know, change, change, change the order. But basically, at the end of the day, this is something that the Duke Collaborative, that the toolkit says we need to do. So we're not just going to ignore it, we're going to make sure we're doing this. Restrooms. Schools had stalls that were marked off. With this, you can increase restroom capacity as long as you have monitoring. So I know in some of our elementary schools that I've been in, you know, they took some of the barriers off so they can go faster into the bathrooms, but there's a monitor, and kids are in and out of the restroom, so we don't have to be as rigid with that. Water fountains. There is signage. I will tell you, all kids have access to water fountains, and they're to fill their water bottles. And most kids, that's what I'm seeing them doing, even little, little ones. They take their water bottle up, they fill it, and they have access to water all day long. And so the water fountains are not, not allowed. We just don't want kids touching, you know, little kids struggle with that, trust me. They go down to drink out of the water fountain, and they touch it with their mouths, and we don't, that, that is not what we want. And so, yes, they can fill up their water bottles as much as they want. And then hallway transitions. We will continue to have the markings. This is required markings in all of our schools and single travel patterns. That's what is happening now. If you've been to schools, which many of you have, and you've spent some time in schools, you can see those travel patterns are very clear, and that will continue as an, as an expectation. Transportation. And with part of this, I am going to bring Lauren up because we've been hearing, we hear loud and clear from our community about transportation. And so we're going to talk a little bit about transportation really quickly. But if you look right now, in, in Plan A for K-5, we actually have moved from 25 students on a bus to 44. That is what is allowed in Plan A. And if Plan A, six, 12, if we go to this, we could also add to 44 on the bus of sixth through 12th graders. Now, this is some other data that transportation wanted me to share. We have about 280 drivers right now, so we, we could definitely use more drivers. With these, the number of drivers, we have the seats available. Time runs could be a challenge, but that doesn't mean we're not going to, we can't tackle that. We just, if, once we figure out how many kids would come back in residential, we can move to the next groups. We just have to figure out how many kids that is and what time we can do those runs to get kids to school on time. I mean, we probably could do it if we had, if we were okay with late arrivals. I mean, we, absolutely. But we still are going to be creative in our solution on how we can start addressing the other students. So here, and I'll, again, Lauren, I'll call you up in a second. But here are some other things. As we move six, 12 to Plan A, here are some proposals we're making. Returning to regular Career Center transportation, morning, midday, and afternoon. Adding transportation, and I'll tell you why, to Atkins Kennedy, they're not receiving any kind of transportation, no residential, nothing. So those schools don't have any transportation to them. And so, let's see. Lauren, I'm going to bring you up to talk a little bit about some next steps as well on how we can start to look at magnet, magnet, other magnet schools.
Good evening, board members and Ms. McManus. Thank you. So as Ms. McManus stated, that's a mouthful.
I know.
I've said that before, but it's a mouthful. I'm sorry. Transportation is a very fluid model. And prior to COVID, we had residential transportation, choice transportation, and magnet transportation. That sounds like three very simple tiers of transportation. But when you actually dive into it, it is much more complex than that. There are varying start times. There are various choice patterns. There is also homeless and fostered transportation in there, as well as all county EC transportation. And so I can tell you that the transportation team is committed to trying to figure this out. It has been very, very complex. And even though we are increasing that ridership to that 44 number, to that 60% capacity, DPI is recommending Plan B transportation, which is one child per seat. They've given us the flexibility to assess that on a local level, which is what we're doing. And it's important that we have students in four days a week if we're going to look at trying to increase the number on our buses. Because if you think about in a cohort situation, a bus is still going to Smith Street every day. And there might be 10 kids today that get on that bus in cohort A, and there may be 20 kids that get on that bus in cohort B. And so there's 30 kids on that bus. And so those are all those things that go into that, that process of the routing system. As Ms. McManus said, Atkins and Kennedy are currently not receiving any transportation option provided by the district. And so the first thing that we are committed to as we, as we look to maybe proceed with the recommendation this evening, is to ensure that we are working with both of those schools to complete an option for them. We have currently been working with those schools when they have their ACT testing days to support those students, and we're looking at expanding that into an everyday model. Our 280 drivers are doing an amazing job, but we have 341 buses. And we're trying to do the same transportation that we would in a normal day. And so that is creating a lot of challenges. Our Career Center, we talked to a number of principals that talked about right now, our Career Center students are going to either the Career Center all day, or they're having to stay remote all day. And so they don't get to see those students in their residential high school face-to-face for those classes. And we do believe that we can do that in a safe manner and go back to students being able to attend their regular high school courses, as well as attending their Career Center classes and continue those credits. And so those are the first three items that we're looking at. As we are able to tackle those, and as we have those students in place four days a week, we are going to continue to assess those situations to try to expand those options out. The additional piece that I will add before stepping down and turning it back over is we do have a number of individuals in our community and in our district that are CDL license holders that do not drive a regular, a yellow bus on a regular day. Some of those individuals are teachers in our classrooms and TAs. They obviously have other things that they're attending to. But some of those individuals drive our blue and white activity buses for sporting events, and they have not necessarily wanted to drive yellow buses and do passenger stops in the past. We have been reaching out to them throughout this time period to see if they have interest, and we're going to continue to do that, to see if those opinions have changed, and to work with them to find ways and be a little bit more creative if we can try to expand some shuttle stops in our schools and do some unique things. But, but this is definitely a very challenging feat in this entire process. Thank you.
But the good, the good news, thank you, Lauren. The good news is we're willing to start tackling it. And we need to look at these, some of these individual hardship cases and start helping kids get to the school that they've chosen to go to. We don't want the last nine weeks, kids going to a different school. That, that would be very, just very unhealthy. We need to keep them at the school that they have been in this school year, and so we will do whatever it takes to take those next steps. And it's going to really be about analyzing the data, which they've been doing, and just keeping on adding more students residential and then going to the next groups. Before I do the last slide and with a recommendation, then I'll open up to questions, I will tell you. you, the other night when I was talking about the fact that I wanted to bring our sixth through twelfth graders back four days a week, those that choose to, I mentioned the fact of having that one day, that one week with two cohorts. I will tell you, as, as I've read, you know, as I thought about it, I was thinking, well, do I really need to do that? But I will tell you this, I talked to Doc, I talked to Duke Collaborative a day, and the one thing that I have been very constant about is listening to experts. I've listened to Dr. Ohl, I've listened to Duke this entire time, this entire three, four months, however long I've been standing up here. And when I talked to one of our, the doctors today, and scientists, she said, she recommended to do one week. She said, so that we can look at your data that week, and make sure that, and that your people do have the time to make sure that they really understand the magnitude of who, how many are coming back, we have an idea here. And so, after I talked to her, I actually thought, okay. She actually thought maybe more, but I said, no, we'll, we'll go with, we'll go with that one week. But the reason I feel comfortable with it is because she's going, they're going to be looking at our data. Every week, they'll look at the data. I will say this too, before I turn to the last slide, if there is a major, an uptick, if spread starts to grow, you saw our numbers, they're, they're low, our numbers of spread in schools, but if it were, we just have to be able to reevaluate and make course corrections as we go. And so, I do, our educators, our students, our families, you know, keeping everyone safe is our responsibility, and making sure, and, and so, again, parents have, you know, with my recommendation, parents would have a choice to keep their students home, they, parents would have a choice to send them, and with that sending, they know that they're going to be three feet apart in the classroom, so I want to make that very clear. With that could mean quarantines, if there ends up being a positive case. So, I just want to make sure that everyone understands, we're, we're going to follow protocols rigidly, we're going to, masking is not an option, and I, I know that older kids may be a little more difficult, but I'm going to tell you that we have not had any problems at, at, with the younger kids, I mean, they keep their mask on. And rarely do I even hear a teacher have to say, put your mask up. And so, I will tell you, I think that some of our students that want to be back, I believe they'll follow the procedures, because they have to. And if they don't, we will have to have a conversation with their parent, and say, this four days is going to work, but it's going to work with your child following the protocols. And so, I think that that has to be very clear, and I know our kids are up for the challenge, and I know our families are up for the challenge, we've shown, shown it with a three percent community spread right now. So, with that said, again, here's my final recommendation. We were coming back on April 12th to the, to the two cohorts, and based on my conversation with an epidemiologist, researcher, scientist from Duke, I think we do, that week, I, I decided today, I mean, literally today, leave that in after my conversation with her. April 19th would open up for students in grade six through twelve that choose to, to begin in-person learning four days a week, and then we would continue flex Wednesdays this school year. Again, we're going into a summer program as well. One last thing I want to say, this is not just about this school year. Our coming back is not just about this school year and six weeks left once kids come back. It is about setting us up for success in the summer, where we have a major extensive program, and setting us up for success for the fall. And I know we can do this, and I know we can do it safely, and I, other districts have done it safely. And so, I'm going to end with the last asterisk, any student who is currently virtual has the option to remain virtual, okay? And so, again, this provides choice to every student in our district, and they deserve to have that choice. As far as our staff, we will continue to reinforce protocols, we will continue to provide any safety equipment and, and PPE that is needed, and we will continue to provide the in-school support that we've been providing, and, and we're, I, I will tell you, we are all in this, in this last six weeks. I wish I had my CDL license, I don't think anyone would want me to, but I will tell you, I would do that every morning and every afternoon, it would be worth it to make sure that our kids had access to their schools. And so, again, that is my recommendation, and I will now open up for questions.
Thank you, Ms. McManus. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. Sure. So, I know you don't, I know you're tackling, and, you know, really bless our transportation folks, I can't imagine. What, if a parent, so, Mr. Wright here, what, what's the expectation, so, if, if I have, if I have that hardship, what do I do? Do I, am I, am I dealing with the principal, I mean, what's, what does that look like?
What's the process?
Yeah, what's the process? Because I know that there are those who really are going to rely on that, and, yeah, what, what, you know, I would feel lost if I didn't kind of have some guidance as a parent.
Yeah, so, so currently, you know, the transportation stop requests go through the school, and then those stop requests make their way over to the Transportation Department. And so, if it is a choice selection or a magnet selection, right now, that information gets, goes back to the school for the school to communicate, or sometimes the Transportation Department is communicating the reason why that stop may currently be denied. There are some situations where there is an option for them to look at stops in a community, and that, that is what we're trying to do right now, and so, a, a bus, you may see a bus drive by to go to a different stop, and so, what does that look like for that community or that neighborhood? And that's where some of those additional CDL holders come into play, because that looks a lot like our normal magnet transportation, where there may be an opportunity to make some adjustments where there's a shuttle stop, or something that can get us to that next step to support those families. But right now, what is happening is, is accurate what that gentleman said, in that those stop requests are being declined because they are a choice selection or a magnet selection.
And so, just one other thought, and, and I, I know you guys are exploring everything, but, you know, I was thinking, is, is there, I, I, I understand that, like, like part, they, they can't pick up on the road, right? I mean, it's no arm, but if, if families were able to go to a particular area, is there any, I mean, they, they might be struggling as well for drivers, but is there a way to partner or do something like that where we're using some other private, I mean, you know, can our COVID dollars pay for those types of things to be able to, to, to help those, those transport, you know, so if I can get to, you know, Mount Zion Church, then they can pick up there and, you know, or, or whatever that looks like?
Yeah, I, I think that some of that partnership is, is definitely worth looking into. We have had discussions with them, especially in the beginning of this process, around drivers and support, and all of the, all of the passes are currently free for the use of those buses, which is super helpful to our community in, in general, but we, we will continue to explore those things, you know, and, again, yellow buses and this, I mean, sorry, blue and white buses can't make those passenger stops, and, and that is why there may be some opportunity for a community stop, like a church, or YMCA, or shuttles between our schools, that, that could support those families.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Yes. Have we updated our COVID contact tracing and quarantine protocols as they have been revised by the state?
So, we have not, and I have Jennifer Corso, I, I knew that that has been a question, and I wanted her to come up and explain, we have not changed our fourteen-day quarantine in our district, but I will have her, her talk about that. I wanted to say another thing is, Karen, we could do some other creative things with CARES dollars with transportation, you know, bus passes, other, other things that we could provide, we have those dollars, and so, we, we, we will definitely, I think the case-by-case individual hardships, we need to resurface those and start to tackle those. So, Jennifer?
Good evening, Chair Woodbury, members of the board, Ms. McManus. As far as the quarantine of the fourteen day, that is still the endorsement of the CDC. The CDC still endorses fourteen days, they do allow for lessening of that. So, as a district, we just, we continue to look at that, so, at this point, we have decided to stick with that. It also is consistent with other school districts of our size in the state as well.
What about the ones from the North Carolina High School Athletic Association? They're down to eight days, and we've got kids sitting out for fourteen. I'm just concerned with more kids coming back, that that's going to be an issue.
And thank you for that question. I do think that, just as Ms. McManus and her presentation has shared, as a team, a senior team, we continue to look at input, not only from the board, members of the community, our staff. Our, our whole purpose is the safety of our students, and that's what we're about. So, their education, absolutely, but we want them to be safe. So, you know, in consideration of that, if we meet with our, our local public health department, and they feel like we can lessen that, I, I think that we will definitely take that into serious consideration.
Yeah. I would imagine that if the High School Athletic Association has moved down, that they, I mean, I don't think they want to endanger children either. I'd, I'd just like us to review these more often, and if eight days is safe, then I think that's where we need to move, rather than unnecessarily having kids miss more school or time on their team or in their extracurriculars.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you again for, for, you know, to bringing that issue back up, because I think it's something that we continually evaluate. I think as we have seen that positivity rate decline in our own district with the, with the lessening of cases, but also in the community, I think it warrants further discussion.
I think Board Member Parker has a question.
I have one. In some of, some comments and emails that were received, we heard that, that there's some Plexiglas that's been ordered, and it hasn't, that hasn't arrived yet, do we have any timetable or anything for that? I guess that's Lauren's question.
Good evening again. Yes, so, teachers were given the option to request a couple different versions of Plexiglas shields, that delivery is still underway. It was a six-week turnaround time from the time we did place that order, and it is my understanding from the vendor that all of those will be completed this Friday. I will add a caveat to that, in that a few schools just ordered their Plexiglas, and so, we are adding those orders on as we get them, and they are turning them around pretty quickly.
Okay, so, hopefully, they'll all be here by the time we get that from spring break, hopefully?
Yeah, any, anybody that ordered anything in that initial round will certainly be in by this Friday, but if it was an order that was given to me just yesterday, real example, I can't necessarily guarantee that.
As far as advertising for our bus drivers, where are we advertising for bus drivers? And, you know, are we looking at different teams in certain areas or things like that? Because when I look at, we need at least fifty more drivers, and, you know, we, I just want to make sure we're getting the word out to people that really may be interested in, in doing this.
Yeah. Jevlyn, if you're on the teams, can you, do you, would you respond to that? I think she might be, I'm not a hundred, she actually might have had another event this evening.
Can I, can I pull the slide down to showroom?
Absolutely.
I'm on it.
Oh, yeah, you are there. Thank you.
Yes, I am here. We have, as you may recall, the efforts we've put in to getting more bus drivers started with raising the salary for the bus drivers. We also instituted a referral program for the bus drivers. We have also instituted a program called Get On The Bus. We've collaborated with Communications to have media, various different types of media. We've even had our team out at the bus lot, providing information to all the bus drivers to encourage referrals at the, at, at all the bus lots. We took an entire week of doing that, and we do have one of our most full bus classes coming up with sixteen participants. The participant level is limited because of COVID. Initially, we only had a handful, or even zero, but we've got it all the way up to sixteen, and we're continuing to work to get more bus drivers for the district.
Great. I just wondered also, I know the city of Winston-Salem has a lot of buses on the road also, and I wonder if, you know, maybe we could talk with them, and maybe there's some contact, because probably a lot of people really have trouble finding bus drivers. You know, that may be a good idea to, to see who's handling city bus drivers, and what we could do to maybe work together on something like that.
Absolutely.
So, we, we have great community people who care so much about our schools, and so, they're obviously listening to our conversation and suggested, you know, I don't know if it's the same CDL classification, but we have firefighters who have to have CDLs and are off so many days a week. Would that be something that we could look at? I mean, th, these are folks who put their, you know, who, who definitely are service-minded around the community, and just wonder if they would help us out, if, if that were allowed? I don't know. But it's worth, worth bringing up.
Yep, that's a good idea. We just wrote that down, someone did.
One other question, middle school sports, are, are we, do we have any idea about, about that?
That, you know what, Mr. Sullivan talked to me about that a couple of weeks ago, and I believe, Dr. Pratt, do you have an answer to that? I believe that we're looking at that for the very, for the last quarter, it was really depending, it was going to be after two cohorts came through. I do remember the conversation now, I'm sorry, I have so many, and they are all jumbled up, but I will tell you, he did say, because I said, well, if we're in two cohorts, how will that work? And he said that the school, that schools want to, to do this, that they would, they would have had that group compete and that group with each other. If we open up to four days, it, it could work as well. Again, it's going to be a slow roll out of that, Mr. Sullivan will work with the folks within our middle schools and our area superintendents and Dr. Pratt, and it may be that it, it happens for four weeks. I mean, it may not be this massive undertaking, but it's something will definitely occur.
Okay, so, you're going to explore that, okay. Thank you.
As far as the distancing during eating, if they're outside, does it still have to be six feet?
I would, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Wherever they're at, yes.
So, for some, I'm, I'm aware that some classes in high school, due to maybe some like, like personnel not being there, some classes have been collapsed. How are we doing that?
Yep, we're going to have to work with, and, and what Mr. Bohannon is referring to, is when some teachers either took a leave or resigned, some of our other teachers, and thank you so much to the ones that did this, took on additional students, and, and then we, we compensated them for taking on additional students, and so, basically, we have to look at those cases one by one, go to each school, how many do they have? And I will tell you, we may have to honestly push in and provide supports, again, from central office around this, because that teacher that now has taken on more kids, if all of them, and a lot of this will depend, honestly, Mr. Bohannon, about, Board Member Bohannon, about how many actually do return, and then we can figure out what, what are we going to need to do for those specific cases. But again, I will tell you, our, our schools, and, and I understand very, very clearly that folks are tired, and, and I know that people say, okay, another change, but I will tell you, you know, change may not be easy, but when you think about why we're doing the change, and, and to get some of our students to a better place, it, it ends up being worth, it is worth that. This is, we're not changing for the sake of change, there, the, the outcome of this is why we're doing it, and what our kids need. And so, no, it's not going to be easy. I talked to our principals Wednesday, yesterday, and said, guys, leading is not easy, and, and change is not easy, and it feels like one more thing, but I can promise you, it's the right thing. It may feel like one more thing, it is the right thing. And spring break is coming, and I hope everyone will take the time and relax, and then that's easing into this, we'll give that week, and then we'll go full force, and then, again, I will tell you, through all of this process, the voice of our educators is extremely important to me, and as I visit classrooms, I ask people questions to get feedback, and I will tell you, it is very important. I, I don't take that lightly, I never have, I am a family, come from a family of teachers, there are all teachers, well, five of eight, five of eight of us, and four of them are still classroom teachers. So, I, trust me, the well-being of our educators, we will not be a successful district without our educators that are in schools, they're our priority, so I can promise you, whatever is needed to provide that support, Mr. Bohannon and other board members, and the community in general, we will do whatever it takes to make sure our folks feel safe and that they have adequate support.
So, I had one more question, the, relative to the mental health side that you had, those resources, were those student resources, or was that every, for students and staff, those mental health resources?
That is, actually, a lot of them were students, but they also, we also have staff resources around mental health.
Okay.
Yes.
I have a few questions. One is, can
One is, can you kind of communicate to the public, how many school districts comparable to our size are returning to a Plan A? Because I know that you've been on the call with several superintendents throughout the state.
Yeah, so I will tell you, in the large 10, and I was on that call on Tuesday morning, and all except for two. So it's the group of, it's about 10, the 10 large, so eight of the 10 large were all moving to Plan A. The two that were holding off were Durham was staying with Plan B, but they reduced their cohorts. And then Guilford has not made the change yet as well. Now, in the P-Tech group, that's a small, many smaller districts, they've all made the change. They've all, except for one. Davie has held off in Plan B right now, so.
Well, based on the school districts that have returned to Plan A, you all have been kind of learning what things they've gone through and trying to make sure we are maybe prepped as we move towards a Plan A. Are there any things that you can think of that maybe the schools that have returned have kind of had challenges that, you know, we may anticipate and, you know, we're thinking through those things?
Well, I will tell you, and in talking to Duke Collaborative Day, I asked that. Who are, the districts in North Carolina were just, unless they're private school, were just given the green light to bring more 6th through 12th graders back? So we don't, we, so really, all the cases, if you looked at the cases, you know, that are, that have been published, it's around Massachusetts, it's around Florida, it's around other places, because our 6th through 12th graders are just not going back in Plan A in all those districts. Now, some might have started, honestly, I think some started this past Monday, some will start next Monday, and then some others, like Wake, will start right after spring break, and some of the others will start after spring break. So we don't, so there's, the data is based on national measures and not just North Carolina, just because we've been restricted up until this point.
Okay. Thank you. The last two questions I have sort of coincide around, I know that the FCAE produced a survey with teachers that I thought was very proactive, and I appreciate Ms. Young's hard work to get that out to our teachers to be represented. And I understand that teachers, you know, definitely have a different view of where we are right now, but I just wanted to know if the district has made any contact with FCAE to kind of reconcile some of those questions that teachers had.
So I got the questions this morning. The first thing I asked Joette to do was, can you print that list and put it on my desk? So after I visited the school, I looked through every one of them. We have, we have not had a chance to sit down and go through that list yet, I will say that. But I do thank you, Val Young, for producing that and doing that so quickly. And as I read it today, I, some of what I answered today were from that and then from your questions, but there's a lot more that I'd like to sit down and provide responses to. So I definitely, we have not done that yet.
Yeah, I think that would be super helpful for, yeah. And which sort of connects to, could, do you think the district could benefit from maybe a FAQ sheet that we publish out as we move into Plan A to kind of help our community to kind of know what to expect as we roll into Plan A?
Absolutely. We'll provide an updated, you're getting it, Brent's already giving a thumbs up for that.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So Board, I'm sorry, Chair Woodbury, your question prompted this question, because I think when I talk to teachers, a lot of times, just within the past month and a half that I've been on the board, there's a disconnect sometimes between what we hear here and sort of what they are hearing in their buildings. And I think that that's sort of a common theme, and I don't, I don't know if that's because there's like a sort of a breakdown in communication in their, within their building or with how they're not getting the message, but I think that a lot of times, the anxiety is perpetuated if the communication channels are not like salient. And so I just, I just want to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that teachers are aware of decisions that we're making, because it's like if a teacher's like, you know, I have this, I've been told I can't do this, but we've been told that that's not the case, then, you know, that...
Yeah. When there are things that come up that are, where I see a disconnect, we started, I started a Monday memo. The thing is, I need, if it's communicated to me that there's a disconnect or that there's a confusion in a message, I add that to a Monday memo that I started, I don't know, five or six weeks ago, that goes directly to all employees, so that you don't run the risk of, our principals do a great job, I know, I know, I mean, we go from our principals, but you're right, when you have a lot of people, things can be communicated differently. And so those issues that come up, like I remember around PPE, I put that directly in the memo to teachers, so that they would know directly, like this is, or like some of our days of snow days or things like that, directly out, so teachers and staff know. I think that's really important. So the more things I hear that just are not the right message, that is where I'm tackling them. I mean, people have to read that, but that's one of the places where I'm tackling it. I try to be very kind of concise and bullet the items, but again, I will continue to do that as, as after I meet with FCAE, I will be happy to take some of the trends that are big items that we maybe have not addressed yet and put those into that newsletter. But that was the goal of that, because I was hearing that exact thing.
Well, I just want to thank you again and for your team, for all that you're doing. And Lee and I were at Reagan today, and we were just so impressed with the principal and the flexibility that he is going to be providing. He said, you know, we're going to get it done, whatever the issue is. We asked about lunch, and he said, we're going to be adding 30 minutes to the lunch so that we can divide the kids up, and we can do some here and some there. We might even be in the hallways serving them. So he, I really love the fact that everybody is pitching in and they're being very creative. And I had one educator that reached out to me, and I think everybody's excited about the kids getting back, and he just, he had a question about possibly some uncomfortableness with some of the classrooms, primarily like, I guess, in middle schools, that might be extremely crowded. What is the, he was worried about the three-feet distancing. He said, is it nose to nose, shoulder to shoulder? How is, how are, how is all of this measured, just to give comfort to these teachers that are a little worried about that?
Yeah, well, let me ask this. With the six feet, was it desk to desk, or was it person to person? Person to person. And that's what, I talked to the superintendent today in Mount Airy, who they have had kids back. She said it's, they've, they've, actually, you know what? That is one district, so somehow they've been back the whole time. I don't know how, but they've been six feet, but she said with the three feet, which they're moving, potentially their middle schools, it is kid to kid. So it's, and from what Lauren's saying, it's nose to nose of the next person.
Okay.
So.
I have one more question about the return. I understand taking that week after spring break for the schools that are begin, that are in four cohorts. Can schools that are in two cohorts go ahead and come back Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, the week after spring break, so that we're not holding back those schools while, because of the bigger schools? I know it makes it harder at central office, but most of this is going to be handled in each school building. But it seems unnecessary to have those children wait, you know, lose another week when they're, you know, it's going to be an easier transition to go from two to one. I can understand waiting the week and go from four to two to one, if that would be something you could consider.
Let us look, let us look at which schools that is, that are, I know it's some of the smaller schools that are already at two. Is it the?
Yeah, it's every middle school except for those, except for...
Oh, true, true. It's all the middle schools, except for the three.
Yeah, and then some of the high schools.
True. That's true. I mean, you pose a very good question there, but, and again, I'm the one that says, easy is not better. But keeping our, keeping things on a consistent, with everything, with everything, just makes, it just makes more sense. I love, I know what you're saying.
And I know it's easier for central office, but it's just as easy for the individual schools, because they don't, it doesn't matter what the other school is doing.
Yeah, because they have been in the, they have been in the two.
If they're all going to Monday, you know, yeah.
Yeah, I understand. I will say, and it is true, they have been practicing already with the, with the smaller numbers. I do think when you look at the numbers that, of middle schoolers that are coming back, it's, it looks high. And so the only other thing it would do is would allow staff in those schools to be totally prepared. I will say, next week, you would say, well, you got next week before spring break. Next week is a very, is a really short week. I mean, you've got, you do have flex on Wednesday, where teachers will be not only planning but grading, grading, it's kind of the end of the nine weeks we just had. You, and you also have Thursday, that is, it's a training day. It's a professional development day, all day on Thursday. So I just say, then Friday is a holiday. So I, I know, I love what you're saying. I had not even thought of that before I walked up here, and that's why I'm kind of hesitating. But I do think that, I think keeping our messaging for all families and for across the district, it just, the consistency helps, because if not, it just, I don't know, there always seems to be mis-messaging. And so that, that's one thing it does help with. So, that's my feedback.
I think that's a great question, and I can really appreciate how this board thinks around approaching, you know, the issues. The one precaution I would have as it relates to all middle schools is giving some students a chance to come back before other students in the middle school grades or at the high school level. So like you're saying, being consistent in this inconsistent, chaotic world, right, right where we are right now, is difficult, but I think to try to be as consistent as possible at the grade levels will create, you know, less stress, and why do they get to do something we don't get to do, kind of thing.
We're already in that with the four cohorts and two, you know, like, there's some kids going two days every other week, and some kids are going two days every week, so it's already all crazy. It's just how much crazier it is.
Yeah. I will say that the larger middle schools, the Monday after spring break are going to two, which is good. So they'll get that feel. So everyone will at least be at two that one week, and then the next week, everyone will be at none. I love your thinking, trust me. And you made me pause, but just for, yeah, for sure, for sure.
All right. If there are no further questions for the superintendent, then we can go to our next agenda item, which is an action item. There is a consideration of the approval to, of the return to school recommendation. Is there a motion?
Chair Woodbury, I'd like to make a motion that we, we return as recommended by Superintendent McManus.
I'd like to second that motion. It's been moved by Board Member Jones, second by Board Member Calvert-Hayes. Any further question or discussion?
I'll just say, because I think, I think it's extremely important that the community kind of understand our sort of rationale behind the decision. And I think that for me, this, this was something that I struggled with, because I think, I'd like most people, and when you kind of are like, oh, we just, we're going to move here, we had a plan, and then we're kind of shifting, this entire year has been a transition. It's been, it's been a lot. And I'm the person, I like to sit, and I like to learn, and I like to understand the different moving parts, and if I don't, I get anxious. But one of the things that I've had to learn is that this is just such, you will never understand the entirety of what's going on. I think that we will still be experiencing the implications of the past year for years to come, for a number of reasons. And I think last evening, I received probably 100, over 100 emails within the past 48 hours, but one of them was from a former math teacher of mine in high school, and we talked last night for about 30 minutes, and she explained that really, you know, in her classroom, she has students who have not, who joined the call, but they don't participate. She is inarguably one of the best, best math teachers in the country. I mean, she is just, to be in her classroom, I admittedly am not a math person, she made me a math person. But in order for her to do that, children have to be in the classroom. And so she, you know, hearing, I think, from her and from other teachers, and also from principals who say that they are prepared and they are ready, I think that it's, to me, I think that it's, it also, as a board member, I think is my job to support the recommendation of our superintendent, who is doing this work every single day. If she believes that we're ready, then I will trust that we are ready. So I just, I just wanted to take the time to explain, you know, my rationale for why I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you, Board Member Bohannon. Are there any other questions or discussion before we take the vote? All right. All in favor? Dion is not, oh, you're taking the, thank you, Joette. All right. So we have... Yes. Okay. So, any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Board Member Bremer. The motion passes. This concludes our special call board meeting for tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
If there are no further questions or discussion, let it be known by approval, all aye?
Aye.
Thank you. You all have a good night. Please be safe.